Well, thank you for inviting me in this afternoon. I appreciate it. And I can't believe that the years have flown by this quickly, that we are looking at a strategic plan that is kind of winding down in providing you that direction that you need. So with MSBA, we look at the strategic plan as a visionary roadmap. The visionary roadmap is created with all stakeholders throughout your school community. For us, that includes students as young as 5th grade through 12th grade. It includes the entire board, community members, however you choose to select them. It includes staff and administration. So we try to bring all the voices and all the values to the table. So we have a good reflection of your school community in developing the strategic plan. We like to gather information at the beginning of the process, and we do that in a couple of ways. First, we have internal and external surveys. I have some templates that I use. And I should just say too, that our process is not boilerplate by any means. We really customize it to your needs. So I'm really giving you again, that high level view of what we can offer. With the surveys, we have an internal survey and an external survey. Each survey is roughly 25, 26 questions that get to the big picture of internal and then also external. We also gather information through listening sessions. And I believe when we did strategic planning with Forest Lake several years ago, I think, Dr. Massey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we did at least 15 listening sessions? No, we made the rounds to all the buildings. And then in addition to that, students, so multiple opportunities for staff, multiple opportunities for students, same with administration. And then we included a lot of your stakeholder groups too. Some of the listening sessions were open to the general public, whoever wanted to attend. And then some were a little bit more focused. I believe we went to early childhood, family education. I remember going to meet with older adults, might have been a senior center in your community. We met with the, I'm pretty sure we met with the faith community from your school district. I remember elected officials. We had city, county, and some of your state elected officials that were invited as well. And then I think there was also a group of business folks. So it was a pretty broad grab at bringing all those voices together and gathering information. And so the surveys and the listening sessions are really the basis for how we start determining what that next strategic plan might look like. One of the things that is important to us at MSBA, and it's important to you, your work is all about student success. So certainly one focus area, we know is going to be student success. That's kind of built into the entire process. And then, once we've done the surveys and the listening sessions, we move into a series of at least three, but probably four strategic planning committee meetings. And that's where we meet with a select group. And usually the board identifies who the community members are. Administration identifies and sends the invitations to students and to staff and to administrators, who will be part of the team as well. And then for the entire board in that process. And so the strategic planning committee is, you really right-size it to your school. At minimum, I always suggest four to six students, four to six staff, four to six community members, four to six administrators, and the entire board. Thinking back to your school and looking in my notes, I think your strategic planning committee was more in the range of 35 to 40 people. And again, we just wanted at that time to right-size it. So we had as many voices as we could bring to help us in that process. Each of the three or four strategic planning committee meetings has a specific focus. It seems like a big daunting task. And when we're done, we actually come out with products that are just perfectly suited to your school district. In the first meeting, and I'm in the process of working with several schools right now, so just did a first meeting Monday of this week. In the first meeting, we take some time for the superintendent to provide an update on what's currently happening within the school district. And that really sets the baseline. So everybody's got that awareness, similar to what you as board members have. And then I usually transition to talk about what we learned from the surveys and from the listening sessions. And from there, based on that information in small groups, we start to move forward what we think might be some themes or focus areas. The second meeting is usually looking at those possible themes. And then we also talk about core values, belief, mission statement, and vision statement. And in your case, you've got some solid belief statements and mission statement. For every school that I work with, you always have the option, if you feel like they are still serving you in your role as governance, in governing, we leave them as is. Some schools will start all over from scratch. And other schools will say, you know, we like our mission statement. Our vision statement's pretty solid, but let's go back and look at the belief statements and let's identify some core values. So that's part of our process as well. We also still have some schools that request the portrait of a graduate. I don't, I don't believe, Dr. Massey, that we worked on that. Yeah, I think you might have done that on your own. I'm not exactly sure. But some schools are requesting that too. And if that's something that your school would be interested in, then we certainly can build that into the process. And then third and fourth meetings are really taking a look at the foundational elements, which are core values, belief, mission, and vision. And also, we get to the point where there are some draft goals and objectives that are created for each of the focus areas. Strategic planning committee is advisory to the board. So as board members, you're the ones that will make that final resolution to adopt your new strategic plan. So until it comes to you at the board table, you'll have an opportunity to do some, you know, if you have some minor revisions that you'd like to make with it before you do that final adoption, final resolution. And then a few nuggets about the process. I do have an extensive toolkit of resources and links that I have created for the process. It's especially helpful to superintendent and admin to the superintendent because they've got busy lives in their work world of running a school. And so I have a lot of templates for letters of invitation, meeting notices, the posting notices, because they're subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. A draft resolution to adopt your new strategic plan, a news release that it's been adopted, a thank you letter to those that served on the committee. And then there's just a lot of other things. Some tools that you can use for social media and promoting the strategic planning process. And then I always say that if there's something that's not there and you want me to create, I will create that for you. So that's one of the value added that we include in our process. And then the other thing that's value added is our school board self-evaluation. Your board has taken that at least twice in the past. It's a standalone tool, but it's also embedded into the strategic planning process because the board self-evaluation is based on having a strategic plan. And then it talks about how you govern with that strategic plan. So that's like that quick, high-level overview. I'm going to just pause for a second and ask what questions you might have for me.
Gal, can you speak to the, you talked about the big team that's now doing the concept, the construct development of the plan. But in the background, there's a writing team.
Yes.
All of that information and trying to capture that in a way that articulates the conversation in the big room.
Right. So when we, thanks for asking about that. So what we've developed is the writing team. And the writing team is usually the superintendent and select administrators. We let them go into the weeds of writing the goals and objectives and bringing them back to the committee for their review. So, you know, again, with the board, and I'm a former school board member, I served on the new onboard of education for a couple of terms. And for the board, you know, your role is governance. So you want to make sure you've got that big picture, that vision for your school. And then carrying out the work is the responsibility of administration. So we actually like to ask them to help draft those goals and objectives. Again, board members, community get to see them. But it helps give us kind of that direction for the strategic plan as well. And maybe, Dr. Massey, was there anything else that you remembered from the last time that you would like me to highlight or say more about?
No, I would just maybe support what you're saying, that stakeholder input was, at least as we were developing a new plan in that case, was exceptionally valuable. What I appreciate about the MSBA process is that we don't try to do the writing with a committee of 40.
Right.
It just is unwieldy. I've been part of plans that do that. And it ends up being wordsmithing everybody's idea.
Right.
With long, beautiful statements that mean nothing. And I think that writing team is a really critical component. Not that they're writing independently. They're capturing the conversation, validating that background.
Absolutely. So I think it's a really nice check and balance that, you know, we let those who are skilled in writing the goals and objectives do that work. But then we still come back to the committee so that they can reflect upon them and make sure that they, it also represents what we've learned through the surveys and through the listening sessions as well. Other questions that you have?
I had a question. You mentioned portrait of a graduate. What was that? I'm sorry, I just had a question.
You cut off just a little bit at the end. Portrait of a graduate. Did you just want me, would you like me to say a little bit more about that?
Portrait of a graduate, yes.
So with portrait of a graduate, it's what are expectations when somebody graduates from Forest Lake Public School? And what we work on are what those traits are, those characteristics. And it might be servant leader. It might be something that relates to career pathways. It might be personality traits. I mean, it just depends on what your school designs. It can be a variety of things. But we give you a chance to really take a deep look at what that is. What are your expectations when your graduating class leaves your school? And are they prepared for whatever that next step is? Whether it is into the armed services, if it's into the workforce, if it's a career technical education, if it's a four-year college? Just wanting them to be prepared for that. And so that also is another good benchmark for you with your graduates. And it helps really design those goals and objectives too, for student success. Does that help answer your question? Is that what you like?
I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good question.
Yes. Hi, Gal, thank you.
Hi.
I'm curious with the surveys, I'm not seeing it say survey here, but I swear we talked about, you talked about different modalities and ways of gathering information. Is there a sample of the kind of questions that you have on these surveys? I mean, if we're, and you said internal and external, so external, yeah.
Say a little bit more about that. Yeah, so I do have a boilerplate for each survey. Internal survey is for staff, obviously, for you as board members to take, and also for administration. And it really looks at things internally. It could be culture, climate. It could be well-defined curriculum. It could relate to discipline. Those are the total environment. Those are some of the things, efficiency within the buildings. Those are some of the things that are in the internal survey. And then the external survey is for the entire community, parents, guardians, alumni, business folks, and also students. And it looks at the big picture of your school internally and externally. The facilities, the staff that are committed to the work that's being done in the school. Discipline is another one. And just, again, gives us that picture of what's happening in their eyes and their perspectives. And the other group that can take the external survey are staff who reside in the school district. So you wear the hat of a staff member, take the internal survey. But externally, I'm also a parent. I might be an alumni. I might have a business in addition, or my family might have a business. So we want that perspective as well. So what I usually do is share the template with you and then let you decide with those questions. And you might say, you know what, there's two here that really don't make any sense for our school district. You might say, I'd like to revise this particular statement. And then you might say, you know what, we really need to add these four statements to really focus in on what we're trying to capture within our school district. So again, we customize it to what your needs are. And then with gathering information through the listening sessions, it's usually just talking about three key areas. Things that are going well, things that could be done differently, and then really, what's your vision of the future is what we capture. So we have just a lot of information that gets gathered in the process. Did you, did you have other questions about the survey that you were wondering about that I can answer? Or is that helpful?
No, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Oh, I do, one more.
Yes.
Well, what is the timeframe process for delivering those out and getting it back and going over it all?
So I'll start with the big picture, first of all, the strategic planning process. I usually say it's a 12 to 14, 12 to 16 week process. With the front end of that being identifying who's going to be on your strategic planning committee, selecting dates, taking a look at the surveys, and some of the other behind the scenes, you know, if we're, where we're going to be meeting, all those kind of good things. And then, once we begin the process, kind of focusing in more specifically on your question, with the surveys, I like to have the survey window open at least two weeks. Usually, that's the very first thing that happens, and that's when the hype starts as well with strategic planning, using the news releases and some of the posting notices that I've developed. And just encouraging people to take a survey, telling them about the listening session dates, getting it on their calendars, sharing that information. And then, once we have the listening session day, usually we close the surveys probably three days, four days, five days. It just depends upon what your wishes are. So that during the listening session, I shouldn't say listening session day, it would probably be a listening session week, more likely, or listening session days. And we kind of just determine if we're doing listening sessions throughout the week, we might give one more week to really get those last evaluations in. Or if we wrap up on a Monday, we might close the link on a Friday. But at minimum, two weeks for surveys, have the listening sessions kind of in the middle of that, and then close those surveys and I start gathering information. And once the listening sessions are done and the surveys have been closed, I usually will wait maybe two weeks to give me some time to get your engagement report completed, ready for the first meeting. And then generally, the meetings are every other week. In between, there's always some activities. So like the school I worked with on Monday night, you know, we spent the next couple of days summarizing the information, creating reports for the next meeting. I like to share them with the superintendent and a writing team as well in between, so they can take a look at it, make sure we haven't missed the mark on anything. And then we move forward into the next meeting. And then just kind of keep repeating that until the process is completed.
Gal, I remember really robust participation in this.
Yes.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we were pleased with the participation.
Yeah. It's interesting, when you ask folks to be on a strategic planning committee and you tell them that you're going to need them for at least three, possibly four meetings, and each meeting is about two hours in length, it seems like a lot. And you kind of wonder, are they going to all show up all the time? And actually, participation has really been great. It certainly was with your school district. I think they just get this energy. I also think that what you find is that students and parents, or student staff and community members are so excited to have a voice. And it's just a way for them to get to understand your role as school board members. It helps them understand the school district operations better. You know, sometimes as a parent, I have my, you know, blinders on and I only see certain things. Students only see certain things. And so it really gives them an opportunity to see the big picture. When we're done with the process, I always like to do a reflection on how they felt about the process. And what probably the biggest comment, no matter where I've done strategic planning, is that I had a voice. I cannot believe I had that opportunity to speak and be a part of this. And what they find is that at the end of the process, the strategic plan just gels together. It's not the board's plan. It's not the superintendent's plan. It's the community's plan. And as board members, you can feel really good that you're making decisions based on your strategic plan.
Okay. I do have one other quick thing I just want to ask before I lose it. Because I think you sent me the information, Steve, or you or JP.
The survey.
Pardon me?
The survey results?
Yes. You sent that to us. So is part of your process kind of comparing then how we've evolved from the survey results of last time to this time?
We can absolutely do that because I have that information gathered. That doesn't mean that you have to use the same questions as last time. So we can, there still will be enough of the same questions or similar questions that we'll be able to do those correlations. So yes, we can easily do that. I think you'll see some trends. You're going to, I think you'll probably see the same commitment for certain things within your school community. And then, as Dr. Massey said earlier, there's a lot that's happened in our state, in our world, and in education since your strategic plan was developed. So you'll also see the trends for the things that you should be addressing and moving into the future. But yes, we can absolutely do that in the process.
Thank you.
I might be getting a little deep in the weeds with my question here, but I'm kind of curious about both the duration of and the makeup of the plan, what's typical across the state for duration. Our last one was five years. And the makeup, our plan has six focus areas, 10 goals. Each goal has three or four objectives.
Yep.
I come from the business world. This seems extremely complex, overrevelous. And in my opinion, see something simplified.
Yep.
That it's more adaptable as time moves on. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, I would love to. And I'm smiling because I wholeheartedly agree with you. There was an era, when we were first doing strategic planning, that everybody wanted everything in their plan. And it was almost pie in the sky. If you're a larger school like Forest Lake, you can have more focus areas and maybe more goals and objectives. If you're a smaller school, eh, that's a, that's a big, a big ask for superintendent leadership and administrators. And so usually, I suggest, now, I suggest three up to five focus areas because you're absolutely right, just looking at yours here on my screen with the numbers. And usually with the focus areas, I suggest one up to three goals, and for each goal, one to three objectives. Now, that, that's a little bit too cut and dried, if you know what I mean, in education. You know, not everything's going to fit into a cookie cutter process like that. But I usually put those parameters on it just so it doesn't become pie in the sky because, of course, you're going to hear all kinds of things that come forward. And so then this helps everybody really start to narrow it down. And I have some processes built in to do that too, in the discussions for each of the meetings of, okay, if you could only have the top four things, what would it be? And then we help narrow it down.
I think that's perfect. My only real criticism of our current plan is that I feel it's revolting. It's not dynamic enough. And what you just spoke to is exactly what I'm looking for. A little bit more streamlined, that's less revolting and more adaptable, and then empowers our administration to adapt to the times and the community. Like, like Dr. Massey mentioned, we have AI now. Five years ago, we didn't really think of that.
Right.
How does it fit into our plan? Think a more flexible plan. It doesn't matter what we have in eight to 10 years that we can envision today. It adapts and flows and allows us to pick those things up. The other part of that question being the duration, ours was five years. Some of these plans typically live. What do you recommend today?
I usually give the school kind of the choice. Sometimes it, it just unfolds and gives us kind of that direction on its own, depending upon what some of the strategic things are that need to be addressed. So usually, I use the term three to five years. I have some schools that work more in the range of three years. I have one school right now that is talking more in terms of five to 10 years. For me personally, that might be a little long range, but not necessarily. Because in some school communities, you know that long range, you're really going to need to look out on, with facilities, for one example, would be the, you know, best example probably. And I remember when I was on the board, we needed to do that because you're not going to acquire land overnight. You're not going to build facilities overnight. So you really need to put that in that, in kind of that long-range view. So it really is what your school wants as far as number of years. There's no magic. I put the parameters just so people have an idea. For some, five years seems like a long time. For me, five years goes by really fast, so.
That's what I was thinking. Five years seems quick.
Yep.
And is malleable.
Yes.
And it meets, like, I look at strategic plans almost as a definition of these are our core values. This is what I do. This is almost the expectation that we deliver, the superintendent, these are his goals and her goals, and creating the district we're looking for. And, gosh, I've worked with businesses that have had that value statement last decades or century.
Yep.
So that's what I envisioned, but that comes from my background too.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, good question. Thank you.
I think that was all I had. Any other questions?
I guess I had another question. You know, you talked about that, you know, you can kind of offer different types of services that we need. So just, what are you kind of thinking, just using your expertise, knowing that, you know, the board is going to be deciding? But like, what are your thoughts if, based on what we have now, and if we're just looking to maybe tweak some things or change something? I mean, we're not looking for this brand new thing. So maybe kind of you have some thoughts on what that might look like, or how long that would take? Are you still suggesting quite a lot of listening sessions and those types of things? Or maybe tell us a little bit about that?
You know, that's a kind of a loaded question because it really does come back to what you as a board are going to want. And I know as a committee, you'll be going back to your board to have that discussion. You have lots of options. You have beliefs, mission, and vision that, in my opinion, are solid. So you might just say, we're going to keep with, you know, keep what we've got. You might want to talk about the core values. You might want to add in portrait of a graduate. So those would be some options. You might look at your focus areas, and you might say excellence in high-quality instruction is still important, learning opportunities, the career. You might, you might identify maybe something that should be changed in here. Maybe the excellence in fostering, fostering the personal wellbeing. I'm not exactly sure what that might be. But you could condense those. So it, it just depends upon what depth you want to go in to as far as the board and your interests. And you could do, you know, less listening sessions. I think in a school district your size, I think you still want to do surveys. I think you probably want to do some listening sessions. I think you would be remiss if you didn't do those. And I think as board members, you are going to be so excited to hear the feedback that you get from people. And you are also going to find that it really helps for the buy-in within your school community to have them be a part of it. So, so there's really, that's not a good answer, but there's no right or wrong. It's really what you folks feel comfortable with as you look at your current strategic plan and what the direction you want to move in.
Yeah, thank you. That's, and we would want listening sessions and plus community involvement and things. I just was kind of thinking, again, some sort of high-level thoughts of what that might look like. But it's helpful to know that, you know, you really could help us with whatever we determine.
Absolutely. And I think, just to give you an example, there are some schools that I have worked with where I've done their strategic plan, and now they've timed out similar to you. And they have beliefs, mission, vision that I think are really strong. And yet, there's been a lot of transition in the school community. It might be a new board. You're more of a newly formed board. It could be a new board superintendent team. And so in order for them to have buy-in, they wanted to start all over. And that's just fine. And then I have others that it's kind of the similar team yet, and they're like, no, we just want you to tweak a couple of things and just get kind of a baseline, maybe even in a particular focus area. So whatever your needs are, we can certainly work within those parameters.
That's actually a really good point because we really are a new board. I mean, I think there's only two members left that were here the last time.
Yep.
So that's a good, that's a good.
Yep. So you do want that buy-in. I remember having the same thing when I was on the board as well, where we had a year that I think four and then five of us on a seven-member board were really new. And so to have the And so to have the buy-in from the past, but there were still things that we knew that were important, that we carried through in our, in our strategic planning work. So it, it's that conversation that you as a board team are going to want to have.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, to me, Gail, it's flexible enough that we can provide you with parameters or goals that the board can see going into the system. So like, not to, not to monopolize it, but say we decide as a group of seven here that we do want to simplify it, we do want to have something more long-term, we can give you that directive and say, okay, this is one of our goals of the strategic plan, we need to tweak this, this, and this.
Yep.
We are also looking for much more simplification. And you can run with that.
We can absolutely do that. Yep, absolutely.
Good. Does anybody have any other questions for Gail? Or is there anything that we missed that you want to bring up that's important for us to know as a subcommittee advising our full board on what we missed?
So I'm just trying to think. I think you've asked really great questions. I think we've kind of covered everything. I, one question that has not come up is, well, actually, a couple of things. One would be a timeframe. And so you may want to think about what that timeframe is. The strategic planning doesn't just happen overnight. And so it is something that you'll want to schedule out. Right now, I am booked out about six to nine months. I'm not booked full, so I just want to say that upfront. At the same time, we just are in the process of hiring another staff person to help me out with strategic planning, so that might make some difference. But I want you to be thinking about that, too. And if, if you're having a transition with your board superintendent team, you may want to wait till that transition happens as well. So there's just things like that that you might want to take into consideration. The other thing that I'll mention is, just as times have changed with your strategic plan, we do a lot of our strategic planning work virtually. So for you, it would probably be some, a combination of in-person and virtual. What I'm doing with a lot of school districts is, listening sessions are virtual, and that way, it's actually a benefit to you, because you can participate virtually, your listening session folks can participate virtually as well, or you can have them in-person and I'm virtual. But just wanted to share that, too. But the committee work, we would do in-person for your school.
Okay. With, with that in mind, say you're nine months out before we can really consider a 16-week process. That puts the year-plus out, which drives us into another election. Our plan expires, and I put that in air quotes here, at the end of 2025. What do you recommend for a stopgap solution?
So that's a great question. I was going to mention that, too. I have a number of schools that are in a similar situation, where we actually sit down, and I have a conversation with you, and I just roll that into part of the strategic planning process for you. And it could be done in a few ways. It could be also tied into that school board self-evaluation, where you take it early. Usually, that's one of the final things we do, but you can take that ahead of time and kind of get your minds set and wrapped around the strategic planning process. And then, at the same time, we would talk about, what is that? What are those? The one or two key things that you really want to focus on in the next year? And it would be you as a board and your administration, your school district, and just identify that. A lot of schools will just really key in on the student success. Other schools have, it's got some schools where they really need to go out on a referendum, a bond referendum. So they want to do some legwork on facilities, just to kind of get us in a position where we can talk about it during strategic planning process. So if that's something that you'd like, I would be more than happy to do that for you and with your group, to get that set up and, and moving forward.
Okay. And what did you call that again? I'm sorry, I didn't get that noted on, a board?
Oh, the school board self-evaluation.
Okay.
Yep. And the board self-evaluation is, matter of fact, I'm doing one of them this evening. So that's why I think you might have moved your committee meeting early, because I'm, when I'm done here, I'm going to hop on with another school. But the board self-evaluation is based on the five standards of board leadership, conduct and ethics, second one is vision, third is structure, fourth is accountability, and the fifth one is advocacy and communication. And the five standards all tie into having a strategic plan that you as board members are governing with. And so, so you could easily start with that, especially since you are a newly-formed board, be a good tool. And, and then we would do it at the end, too. So you could see that contrast from beginning to end, which might be kind of fun for your, your school district.
So we could use that as a basis for kind of a stopgap strategic plan, and then knowing that we were going to go into a strategic plan, it would be even 2027 at this point.
It could be. Yep. Yep, absolutely.
You know, you and I connected earlier today, and sure, we're set up for tonight, and I shared with you that I'm retiring. And that creates a, an element in the process, I think. So do you want to speak to that?
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. And I think when you know that you're going to have a change with superintendent, a lot of, my recommendation is that you have your new superintendent in place when you start that process. I would think most new superintendents would appreciate that, too. I think it just gives them a chance to be a part of the process. I will also usually recommend that a new superintendent be in place for six months, sometimes a year. Depends upon who you hire, and it doesn't have to be, but it's just nice to give the superintendent that chance for him or her to get their feet on the ground and, you know, working with the board, knowing the community. So I think that serves you better. It's, it's not a must-have, have to happen either at the same time. So it's really what you want. But I think you're, you will be happy, I think a new superintendent would be happy if you give that person some time to serve your school community. And actually, based on what we just said, that probably would just be right in place. It would tie right in, fit right into what we've talked about.
Yeah, it actually works really well with the timeframe we talked about, because we started this in January of '27, and our strategic plan was more of a stopgap solution that went to 2026 through 2027, that would give it any finalize and start a new one in '28, which, gosh, in dates feels really, really right, just the way that those years fall down.
Yeah.
At least to me.
Yep. So that, I mean, I'm more than happy to work with you to set that up, and I, I think you'll be real happy with that, too, to have kind of that stopgap, you'll have that focus. Plus, for a new superintendent, also, just knowing that there's maybe one or two things that he or she are focusing on, rather than a much bigger picture, might be easier for everyone as well.
Yeah, which would tie back to my recommendation of taking a really good strategic plan that we have now, narrowing it down to the two or three things we really care about, having that be the focal point of the superintendent their first year, and then deciding how to grow that based on what they learn in their first year as an executive in our, in our system here. I was looking at the school board self-evaluation on your website. What is your availability for that? Are we talking six to nine months on that one, or is that something you could do more in the next three?
Yeah, we definitely, yeah, that is a kind of a one-off, and so we can do that whenever. Usually, I should say, I need at least about six weeks in there. So if you knew that you wanted to do it, and the only reason I say six weeks is, from the time of the date that we're going to review it, we back up, and I want to get the survey out to board members and superintendent to take. And then, once in a while, board members are busy, so they don't get it done, so we do a couple reminders, those kinds of things. But yeah, we can absolutely do that. And I do a lot of those as a one-off, and use that as the start of the strategic planning process. So yeah, if you're interested in that, we can just talk about a date and get that on the calendar.
Yeah, so if we had a goal to do that in December or January, we'd be...
Mm-hmm. Yes, that'd be perfect. Be perfect.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments for Gail, or can you give her her evening back, so she can go back to work?
Can help another school, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be kind of good. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much for taking time. I really appreciate it. If you think of other questions, even while you're meeting, because I don't think that you're going to be done, I think you're meeting for a little bit longer, but I will be free for a text or a quick phone call or something like that, too, to answer your questions. But don't be shy about reaching out if there's something else I can help you with. And I'd love to do a presentation for your board as well, your entire board.
And should we have questions around costs or quotes and stuff? We'll have our administration team reach out to you to get those.
Okay, absolutely. And I can provide that for them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Gail.
Have a good rest of your evening. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.